Hello, I am Jamie Anderson Callahan, a member of the League of Women Voters Rochester. I would like to welcome all of you tonight, candidates, the audience, and those viewing at a later time, to this forum sponsored by the League of Women Voters Rochester. We'd also like to thank our generous partners of tonight's forum, the Rochester Post Bulletin, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, the Rochester Public Library, and RCTC for their help. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization organized at the local, state, and national level to encourage citizens to participate in government. While we as a league do study and take stands on issues, we never endorse or support political parties or candidates. The views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters Rochester or any partner or sponsor of this forum, and the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. It is our purpose in sponsoring this forum to provide you with an opportunity to hear candidates discuss face-to-face issues that are important to you. Tonight's questions have come from the League of Women Voters Rochester, the Post Bulletin, the Chamber of Commerce, and members of our audience. As there is never enough time to cover all of the issues in a limited time in settings such as this, please feel free to contact the candidates' campaign headquarters directly if your questions are not addressed tonight. We'd like to thank all the candidates for running for office, for offering to serve their community, and for the enormous time and dedication and commitment that running and serving demand. We encourage our members as individuals, as we encourage each of you, to get involved in your community and the political party of your choice. All candidates who filed for office were invited to this forum, and as you see, we have more than two candidates so we can hold this forum. Candidates for this seat are Mark Hickey, Jan Thronson, Shawn Palmer, Tim Schmidt, Joe O'Toole, and Byron Clark. Each candidate will have one minute to offer an opening statement. The candidates will then respond in turn to questions provided by the League of Women Voters Rochester, this evening's partners, and by the audience. Candidates will have one minute to answer each question. The candidates will have 90 seconds each to make closing statements. I would like to suggest to candidates that you make your answer as succinct as possible. It isn't necessary to use the entire minute for your answer if you feel you have answered the question, but please finish your sentence when your time is up. We would like to cover as many questions as possible. I would like to remind the audience to remain quiet during the forum and to turn off all electronic devices. The timekeeper tonight is League of Women Voters Rochester member Julie Gilkinson, who you can see right in front of you, and she will stand when the stop question comes up if you aren't responding to it. We'll call your attention to it in a nice manner. Also asking questions will be Edie Grossfield from the Post Bulletin and Julie Faisal of the Chamber of Commerce. Did I get that right? Faisal, oh, I think I did. Faisal, Julie Faisal. The candidates have drawn numbers to determine the order in which they will speak, so we will start with opening statements finally, and we will start with Mr. Mark Hickey.
Good evening. A little bit about myself, I'm married and have six sons. I've earned a master's degree in electrical engineering from the University of Wisconsin-Madison. I've lived in Rochester for 17 years, working at IBM as an electrical engineer in computer design. I have over 30 patents as an IBM inventor in the areas of computer architecture and computer design. I recently retired as a colonel in the Army Reserve after a 32-year career as an infantry officer. That career included deployments to both Iraq and Afghanistan. I also have a long record of community service in Rochester, serving as the chairman of the Grand Arena Building Committee, as a board member of the Rochester Youth Hockey Association, as past treasurer of the Southeastern Minnesota Youth Orchestra, as a board member of the May Jacobs Foundation, the Friends of Grand Park, the Rochester Charitable Alliance, and other organizations.
Thank you. Mr. Thronson.
Good evening. My name is Jan Thronson, and I'm a lifelong resident of Rochester. I will bring a new face to the city council. I have the experience, leadership, time, and passion to represent the Fifth Ward. My leadership and passion will ensure transparency and accountability are first and foremost. This ensures the democratic process to be engaged from conception to completion for all parties involved. I have the time and experience needed to seek strong economic growth in small business and manufacturing for a well-diversified community. I too have done a lot in the community. I do a lot for the veterans. I am president of the Bell of Honor that goes around, actually, we're starting to go around the United States through that. We just did that for the fallen in Prescott, Arizona, who did a thing in Rochester for them. So again, I would like to be able to serve. My experience in the construction trade is 37-plus years. Thank you.
And gentlemen, in the interest of time, let's not stand for every answer. You'll get it. Mr. Shawn Palmer.
Partnership. I want you to hear Palmer and think partnership. I want to be your partner in the city council. I accomplished a partnership with the city of Rochester and the YMCA at Silver Lake Pool that improved service and cut costs. I partnered with Habitat Humanity, where we worked with the committee and built a house. I received Volunteer of the Year for that effort. I partnered with Camp Wilson in Cass County to preserve 185 acres in a conservation easement. DMC is a partnership. It's between the state, the county, the citizens of Rochester, and Mail Clinic. I've learned to be a good partner through being a good leader and through my leadership experiences. I've been the chairman of the Environmental Commission for Olmsted County. I was president of the Camp Wilson Board. I'm an Eagle Scout, just some of the examples of my community leadership. You need a good partner and leader on the city council, and I'd like to be that person. I ask for your vote on July 30th. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Schmidt.
I was born in Rochester, graduated from John Marshall in '88, and I have a business admin degree from the U of M Duluth and Bachelor's Science in Accounting from Winona State. I became active in local politics several years ago with a neighborhood issue. Since then, I've become a regular council watcher. I served on the Heritage Preservation Committee, working to get the preservation ordinance passed. I currently serve on the Joint Airport zoning board, and I work for the airport master plan. I'm active with Kiwanis, AARP tax aid, the History Center of Homestead County. I've also participated in community tree plantings, and a little bit better. The service I'm most proud of is as a leader of the Northrop Neighborhood Association. Organize meetings, advocate for the neighbors, and work with city staff. History is an important part of civics since everything we do is built on the work of our forefathers. Our city has worked to create a vibrant downtown. Our neighborhood groups have worked to create safe and attractive neighborhoods, and the previous four or five council members have worked hard to create community involvement, and I plan to continue giving everyone a voice.
Thank you. Joe O'Toole.
Good evening. I'm Joe O'Toole, Jr. I've been here in Rochester for five years. Four years of that time has been spent as the chair of the Ethics Panel Board for the city, the founding appointee to that Ethical Practices Board, also the vice chair of the City Charter Commission, and my life has been a life of service in all the works that I've done, from being a successful business senator, representing plaintiffs and severely injured people in catastrophic industrial accidents, through even my work today as service to my church community and as a teacher at Lord High School. Been involved in many other civic things in the city. I've appeared in a number of plays, both at Rochester Civic Theater and also at the Rep., and I find Rochester to be a dynamic area, looking for a dynamic leader. That's me.
Thank you. Byron Clark.
All right. Thank you very much for putting on the forum. I really appreciate the opportunity to get out and visit with people. Just a little bit of my background, I moved to Rochester in 2004. Prior to that, I was a North Dakota state representative for just over five years. I've got three kids. My oldest will be a first grader at Jefferson this year, and probably one of the main reasons I wanted to get involved was because of the impact that Destination Medical Center was going to have on the community of Rochester. Previously, I had experience working on a piece of legislation that I authored and sponsored in North Dakota called the Renaissance Zone. It was to revitalize the downtown community in Fargo. It proved to be a huge success. Fifty-three other communities across the state of North Dakota have since adopted that very same piece of legislation. Done right, we can make sure that it'll be a success for Rochester, and I hope that I can provide some different insight to make sure that it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we turn to the first question, which is from the League of Women Voters, and you're going to have to pass that all the way back to Jan Thronson, who will answer first, and we'll stay on the same, we'll go from my left to right, continuing here, and I'll tell you who's speaking next, to keep it together. What is the biggest problem or challenge facing our city in your opinion? You have one minute to answer.
From what I see, attending city council meetings and being involved, I think transparency and accountability is one of the biggest issues there. The meeting the other night, and in the paper you'll see that the Mail Clinic stood up, and we're in disagreement with what took place as far as coming up with the new corporation. I don't know whether they're right or wrong because they didn't say what their issue was, but I think that as citizens of Rochester, as DMC moves forward, transparency and accountability is job one. We need to make sure that all the meetings are open to the public. We need to make sure that they put up the agenda of the meetings, the meeting minutes, and I think the council is moving that way right now. I think Randi is doing a good job at that and moving forward to do that. Again, when Mail Clinic stood the other night, they really didn't say what their issue was. It just, and they still haven't really said what their issue was. So I think it's important, transparency and accountability as DMC moves forward and spend millions and millions of dollars over the next 20 years.
Thank you. Same question, Shawn Palmer.
When I'm out in the neighborhood talking to people, knocking indoors, talking to business leaders in our community, three things come up. First of all, it's crime, then schools, and then parks and rec. Everybody wants Rochester to be a world-class city with world-class items. We need to remember that we're working for the citizens and we're looking to what's best for us. Crime is not a problem right now, but people want to make sure that we have our police force up to date, and we're doing a good job with our neighborhood watches. They want high-quality schools. We can partner with the schools and make them a little bit better and work together as a community. Parks and rec, we need to be out there and make sure that we have world-class park and recs. We have tennis courts, swim pools, we have trails. Those are all important to the citizens of Rochester, and with DMC, again, it's a partnership. It's a partnership between our county, between Mail, between the state and the citizens of Rochester. We need to do our best for all of our partners, and that way nobody loses.
Thank you. Tim Schmidt.
The biggest challenge facing our cities, the city, I go to neighborhood meetings, and there's always the regular issues of parking, crime, traffic, and one of the things we need to do is update our mass transit. Our bus schedules are completely out of date, they don't service newer areas of our city, and it's time to look at Sunday service. And with the DMC coming, we have a chance to rebuild downtown. We've got a great vibrant downtown with Thursdays and First and Riverside, but to be a true urban experience, I believe it needs to have retail jobs and residential all within walking distance.
Thank you. Joe O'Toole.
DMC is the issue that's in front of us. It is going to have not just a downtown impact, it's going to have a citywide impact. It is your tax dollars, it's your money at work, and that's why you need a council representative who is going to be your voice in the expenditure of those funds.
Thank you. Byron Clark.
I would agree with Joe in that respect, in the fact that when I go door-to-door and I talk to people, I've knocked on a little over 4,000 doors so far, and DMC tends to be the one issue that comes up the most often. People are worried about how it's going to affect their taxes. They're worried about how we're going to pay for it. They're worried about the impact it's going to have on the community and how it's going to change the place in which they live, and those are all very valid concerns. I think that as a city, it's important that we plan for it appropriately, and if we do so, we can make sure that we do it in such a way that it can be a success, and we don't necessarily have to raise people's taxes to make it work.
Thank you. And now the microphone should go back to Mark Hickey, so he can answer this question. What is the biggest problem or challenge facing our city?
When I go door-to-door and talk to people, hands down, the issue that everybody's talking about is DMC implementation. So I think the overwhelming opinion that I get is that DMC implementation is going to be very important and very good for the city, but there are still those lingering concerns about how it's going to be implemented. Those $585 million in infrastructure funds that the city council has to ultimately approve, people still have concerns about the process, and I think we have the tools available to us. The DMC Corporation, founded by the city council, is subject to the open meeting laws and subject to open record laws. There are also safeguards in the legislation to protect the taxpayer and ensure that those infrastructure dollars get used wisely. So the number-one issue is DMC implementation.
Thank you for your answers, candidates. The next question goes to Shawn Palmer first, and it will be from the Rochester Post Bulletin, Edie Grossfield.
Hello. Can you hear me? Okay. Can you hear me? There we go. Okay. As a city councilman, you would be working with your fellow council members to review the city budgets and decide whether to approve the recommendations of city staff for all of the various departments. Would you describe yourself as someone who will look to cut the budget wherever possible, or someone who would take a more moderate approach, seeing some need to increase spending and some need to cut back on spending? Or do you see yourself as someone who sees the need to expand city services, even if that means a raise in taxes?
You have one minute.
You look at DMC coming, that's the most important issue that we're all talking about, and part of that is the crime. Part of it is school, and part of it is parks and recreation. There just was a newspaper article the other day in Myrtle Beach, it's a great beach to go to, but guess what? It's crime-ridden and people don't want to go there. We need to make sure we have our partnership with our county, partnership with our schools, so that we use the taxpayer dollars to the best that we can. All those tax dollars come from the same people, they come from the residents of Rochester. We need to be good stewards of that dollar, but we also need to make sure we're growing Rochester in the proper way, and we grow it proper for everybody, and then we need to include everybody when we do that. Again, parks and rec is important to everybody, schools are important to everybody, and we need to make sure that we keep a crime-free city.
Thank you. Tim Schmidt.
We do have a very experienced staff. If you look at the department heads, there's over 100 years' experience between them. And so I believe we do run efficiently. We've actually been able to keep costs down per person, adjusted for inflation over the past few years. One of the things I look at is that as far as the state goes, we're getting something like $0.60, $0.70 a dollar goes to the state, and then we're short. For the LGA, which is our, the local government aid, the money that comes from the state, we get something like $75 per person. Minneapolis gets over $300. We're one of the few cities that actually get less than $100, so I do want to see if we can shake some more money out of the state. The DMC, I think the big miracle with that was actually that we did get money from the state, and we need to basically assure that when we spend the taxpayer's money, it's justified and proper and actually for the best use.
Thank you. Joe O'Toole.
And I would agree with all of that. I would view myself as a moderate on taxes from the standpoint that we would be looking at each item as it comes, as it's listed in the budget, you know, going in a line-item search, but I'm also very, very comfortable with the professionalism and the ability of our staff. I've had the opportunity in the past four and a half years to experience the quality of the folks that we have on staff here, you know, being intimately involved through the Ethical Practices Board, the Charter Commission, et cetera. And I think that, yes, as council, do we provide the oversight to that? Absolutely. But if we need to increase services in order to have the safe city and the housing that we want, we need to be moderate on that.
Thank you. Byron Clark.
So if you ask me how I describe myself with respect to government taxes, I'll tell you that government isn't free. There is a cost for basic city services, so there's always going to be some need to pay for things, especially things that we need as a community. However, I think that as a public servant, you absolutely have to be good stewards of the public dollar. I have a little bit of a different experience when it comes to politics. When I was in North Dakota, we had whole communities on western North Dakota that were really strapped for money. This is all pre-oil. We looked at a bunch of things that we called toolbox legislation, which was basically resource and revenue sharing agreements between jurisdictions. We can do that here. The city and the county share a building, and they do share a number of services, but we can actually try to coordinate those services much more appropriately so that we can maximize the use of the taxpayer dollars. And so I would say that I'm fairly conservative when it comes to spending the taxpayer's money. I'm for a common sense approach though when it comes to government, and I'm not opposed to doing things that need to be done.
Thank you. And now this question goes to Mark Hickey.
When we talk about budgets and the budgeting process, budgets are all about priorities. So again, as I go to door-to-door, I hear a lot of different opinions. As you can imagine, they're all the way, all over the map. I think we start out with kind of the common things that we all agree on, public safety. There's something that I haven't found a person yet who wants to cut that, and that's probably the one thing that everybody can agree on. As you move out from there, you know, we always have to be mindful as council members, be good stewards of the taxpayer's dollar, but on the other hand, as a first-class city, we have to be able to provide first-class services. We talk about things like park recreation, Rochester Civic Music, the Public Library. These are all important functions. Now, within those, you can always look to be more efficient and try to improve, but those are the types of services that our citizens expect.
Thank you. Jan Thronson.
I believe as a council member that you need to be in the age, you need to understand what the budget is. In fact, you don't look at some of the bigger equipment when it comes to the budget, do we really need that equipment? As you hear in the news now, Homestead County is looking at a wheelage tax. That's going to affect everybody. They're looking at a sales tax. That's Homestead County. Rochester just did their sales tax to prove it. So what we're looking at is more and more taxes, more and more money. So we have to start to learn a little bit to live within our means. Public safety is number one. We should never cut anything when it comes to public safety. That's the most important thing. But when it comes to the other structures, I think that if each council member would sit there and go and take part of that budget and really look at it and see if we really needed it, and go out to some of this equipment, some of the land, that's all we do. It's nice to have parks. It's nice to have all this stuff, but we've got to keep them up, and that costs a lot of dollars. So we've got to set our priorities because things are going up.
Thank you. The next question will go first to Tim Schmidt, and it will be asked by Chamber of Commerce member Julie Faisal.
The Chamber of Commerce believes that you cannot have a strong community without a strong business community. As a council member, what would you do to advance the free enterprise system and ensure a climate in which business can grow, develop, grow, and prosper?
One of the recent initiatives is Jerry Williams headed up the committee to streamline the permitting process. It's come up with some good suggestions so far, such as better database management and also having a single point of contact, and I believe those have yielded good results so far. One thing also I advocated for was the preservation ordinance. Whenever I talked to people, their response was either, "We've got to save the buildings," or "What about property rights?" And really, neither view was really quite correct. It's an economic development program that's been used in Minnesota and nation in the world, and I believe it's something that a lot of the small business owners, especially downtown, could definitely benefit.
Thank you. Joe O'Toole.
I'm a successful business owner. I've started two businesses completely from scratch, have gone from just paying myself to having a construction firm with 25 employees to having an investigation firm with 10. I'm very familiar with what it takes to start a business, to operate a business, and to be successful at that. I would see council wanting to create an environment where that can occur and encourage entrepreneurship.
Thank you. Byron Clark.
Sure. So I've actually got a little bit of experience in that area. We worked with businesses, specifically in the Renaissance Zone legislation that I worked with, actually partnered with them to incentivize them to expand to get the development that we needed, and we did it all without using the taxpayer funds. We worked with workforce training programs to try to identify people with the appropriate skill sets that were underemployed, to get them skill sets that they needed to place them with employers so that they can grow. We did a number of things actually to partner with business because, you know, we believe that, or I believe that even, the businesses that are in the community and the local businesses are really some of the best businesses to have. They employ people locally, they live here, they contribute to the economy, and so it's something that I think we should always encourage.
Thank you. And that same question will go to Mark Hickey.
It's part of my preparation and running for the city council, I had an opportunity to sit down with Jerry Williams, discuss his work as part of the Perpetual Task Force, leading that task force, and had a real good discussion. That task force, after the first year, issued an interim report with 65 recommendations. Some have been implemented, some they're still working on. The final report issued by that task force really boiled it down to two remaining items. It talked about the Asela software and technology to be used as part of the permitting process, and that goes all the way from large developers down to the person who's pulling a DEFC permit that can really streamline the process and improve it. The other thing is the establishment of a director of community development. It's more than just a liaison, but a person to facilitate the process, and some might say that this sounds like an extra layer in bureaucracy, but really, when you look at similarly sized cities, this is a position that's been missing from Rochester from some time, and those two recommendations will finalize his report.
Thank you. Jan Thronson.
Over the years, I've heard about the permit process. People have left town because the permit process is too hard, they don't like it, so they leave their businesses, they don't prosper here. A good example of partnership would be the Highway 52 of Menards, which we're just doing now. That's after years out there because we couldn't get along with the state, state said we didn't need it. It's things like that, that we have to move along. It's good for Rochester, as you see the growth and the work and the jobs that's going to create. Being in the trades for 37 years, our trade schools, I think we need them, we need them back, we're starting that direction again. The trade schools, there's McNeil's, manufacturing, there's places that need welders, and they need tradespeople, and they can't get them because we don't have them, we're not doing that. If we want a stay a vibrant community, to have our children be here and stay here, we need to start getting our trade schools back and build a world-renowned trade school here so people come to Rochester and run the trades, and so we can keep those jobs here in Rochester and on U.S. soil.
Thank you. Shawn Palmer.
Well, I did my four-year apprenticeship as a carpenter, and I know how important the trades are. I also worked in the construction industry and have for over 35 years. Businesses in Rochester, it's an attitude. We want businesses to come to Rochester, we want a good community, so their employees want to come stay here, and they want to do business here. But again, it goes back to attitude. Are we a partner with the businesses? Are we want them here? Are we in this together? And I think that's the items that we need to think about. I've been a member of the Chamber of Commerce for over six years, and I believe what they provide, what they're trying to do is provide a good working relationship for businesses, and I support them. Thank you.
The next question goes to Joe O'Toole, and we will now ask a few questions that are from our audience here tonight. And the first question is, briefly discuss your experience with the arts in Rochester. Explain what role you feel the arts can play in the future of Rochester.
I love the arts. The two, I consider two, you know, the premier theaters that we have, Rochester Civic Theater that I starred in the production of Sherlock Holmes just a few years ago, and then at the Rep. as Lucian in The Voice Next Door, gave me an appreciation for not just performing, but the facilities and the folks themselves who make it happen. And we are, we are really, really, really lucky here in Rochester. We have fine arts, we have dedicated people who put our shows together, and a lot of volunteers who come out to bring them to life. And you will have a joy next year to come to the finest arts center in southeast Minnesota when you come to see a show.
Thank you. Byron Clark.
I actually do think that arts are a valuable part of the community. You know, if you really want to have a successful community, you really need a place where people like to work, live, and play, and arts are certainly part of that entertainment option. We've got a lot of great venues in Rochester. There's the Art Store down on the Peace Plaza. I like to go hang out there every once in a while, and the Civic Theater does a really wonderful job as well, so it absolutely has to be part of any successful community.
Thank you. And this same question will go to Mark Hickey at the other end of the table.
Well, I look at the impacts on our family. My six sons have been involved in sports, the arts through music and academics. And through those associations, I've had some involvement. I was treasurer for three years of the Southeast, Southeastern Minnesota Youth Orchestra and a current volunteer for the Suzuki Association here in town. Music has been a fundamental part of our life as a family and it's important for Rochester.
Thank you. Jan Thronson.
I think the arts are important. I think any community you go to, if you look at the sculptures or the music that they put out in different communities in the downtown vibrant areas, you need that. I think it also starts back in the schools. Our Rochester Public Schools, when you talk about band, it really is non-existent. The marching bands, we have Lourdes. We have one small private school in town here that represents Rochester when it comes to a marching band. So if we don't support our arts in our schools in the beginning, it's pretty hard as we, they grow up to appreciate the art. I think it's very important, if you look around Rochester, you see the designs, the drawings, the paintings, it all adds to the life and the quality of Rochester. It's very important.
Thank you. Sean Palmer.
Well, everybody likes the arts. We all know that. I like to put my money to what I believe in and I'm a member of the Arts Center is where I make a contribution and I'm a member of that. You walk Rochester, you look at the beautiful art that the Mayo Clinic has, you walk the outside, you talk to patients and talk to visitors, they, they love what we have in Rochester with Mayo Clinic and the outside stuff. It's wonderful. So again, I love art.
Tim Schmidt.
Well, once upon a time, I used to drive trucks over the road and I could tell you that you can just go into a town and you can tell if they're growing or dying just by the public art that you see. And Rochester is definitely growing. You can see it downtown, the murals and all the wonderful activated spaces, even the electrical boxes. Thursdays on First, Riverside concerts. It's really good to see that the arts community is getting together and doing more and more for the community. And one thing with the Rochester Symphony Orchestra has shown us just recently is that there is a need for a concert hall, whether it's a new build or it's converting the Dodge Actel Theater.
Thank you. The next question goes to Byron Clark first. This is from the floor. How would you enforce the 10:00 p.m. curfew in Rochester City Parks?
So as, as far as enforcement for the 10:00 p.m. curfew, I'm not sure that I'd be out patrolling parks. I don't think that'd be a hard task to tread. But no, I, I think that if you're going to enforce ordinances like that, you really need to work closely with your police department to make sure that, you know, if there are concerns that the community have, that we're enforcing them in an appropriate way. And that's probably the, the best way to do it. If you're talking to the police department and, and you don't feel like you're getting, you know, a positive response or a desired response, you should certainly call your city council member in this case, Bob's in the audience, and you can visit with him. Thank you very much.
We're reversing order, so Joe O'Toole goes next.
The, my days of patrolling the parks are long gone. I was a police officer for 10 years and patrolling the parks isn't, when I, when I was that age, that was a fun thing to do. I don't know that I would do that today. The, we give our support to the police department. We are really, really fortunate here in Rochester. We have a very professional, educated, well-formed police department that all the, for the past three and a half years, I have actually sat on the promotional boards for the police department. And I've been amazed at the quality of the folks that we have hired and that we have enabled, we hire promotable people. They're professional and I think they do a wonderful job. And if there's a question about that they're not, then right now you can call Bob.
Tim Schmidt.
Well, I kind of feel like I should give it the peer pressure and call Bob. But, you know, it's down to the troubles that having, you know, people hanging out in parks late night, between the noise with PD and drinking and whatnot, it is an important thing to make sure that the parks are patrolled. I don't believe it's a really good use of police funds to have regular traffic patrols or even foot patrols. So this is something where the neighborhood watch can come in. And if you see somebody, keep calling the police and if not, call your council member. One of the things we did with East Park, we had some problems there and we actually moved the closing time up, I believe it was dusk, so that's another thing we can do.
Thank you. Sean Palmer.
I'm a big believer in education when it comes to rules. We need to make sure we're educating everybody, maybe some signs up would be helpful so people understand what the time is that it is. The other item you can do is clean the parks. If it gets dirty or we get a mess, we need to make sure we clean it up because a little bit of junk, girls tend to be a lot more drunk and we don't need that.
Thank you. Jan Thronson.
I believe that's neighborhood watch groups, the neighborhood groups in your area are the eyes and the ears of the police department. I think if there's issues going on, I think that you need to contact the police department and deal with it. Idle hands, we all know we are all kids once. After 10 o'clock, there's not a lot to do, so the kids start saying, I'll dare you to do this, I'll dare you to do that. That's when the trouble starts. So again, if the police do their patrolling, but I think it goes back to your neighborhood watch groups, that if you're active in your group and you know who your neighbors are, you know who's in your neighborhood, I think that relieves a lot of the issues and a lot of problems. And then like I said, if there becomes a problem, I think then the police have to address it, they do their warnings and then they have to take the action if they, if they have to take the action. But I think the first thing is to do is, is to educate the people through neighborhood watch groups and find out just exactly what the people are doing.
Mark Hickey.
I think the basic question is of public safety. Again, as part of my preparation for this role, I sat down with Chief Peterson and had a conversation with him about his department. And one of the issues we talked about is community service officers. So these, these civilians have an opportunity to do some of the administrative functions which allows us to get the police out, back on the street where they belong. This has been a very successful program in Rochester over the last several years, but for the last four years, we've only funded 10 of the 14 authorized positions. I think we have an opportunity and a priority to fund that community service officer program and that could help alleviate these types of problems.
Thank you. Joe O'Toole will be the first to take the next question. I'll take one more question from the floor and then we'll come back to the post bulletin for the next round. And the question is, how will you ensure participation by the neighborhoods in the planning and zoning issues that come before you?
It's critical that the neighborhoods be involved. We look around the neighborhoods such as Cusky Park, that when there, and our neighborhoods up in the fifth ward, that when there is development going on, that we make sure that if developers, the builders are engaging with the, with the neighborhoods and hearing their concerns, hearing their ideas and that as an active council member to, to cause that to happen.
Thank you. Tim Schmidt.
Currently, they just send out notices or these little white postcards that kind of look like nothing, somebody just tosses them. But they need to be a little more proactive and get into like town meetings. When you have council meetings and people stand up and say, I don't know what's going on, be sure to take the time to explain it all. And the more proactive approach is basically getting, getting neighborhood associations in place. I've got one in Northrup, there's others around me. And that way we do have a ready pool that the council members can go to and say, here's what's happening in your neighborhood. Do you have any comments? Do you have any questions? And also, this would be a good chance to update our land use plan. It's been in place since 1979 and I can tell you that once for my neighborhood, it's only three pages long, two of which are maps. I think that'd be also a good chance to get the, a reason for the neighbors to get involved into these planning processes before it kind of blows up into something like we're seeing on Fifth and Fifth.
Sean Palmer.
The other thing that we can do is that when we go into these meetings, we can look at it as a partnership, that the neighbors and everybody else is involved, things that they have and they do have a word to what needs to be said and what needs to be heard. Also that the businesses or the developers need to be assured that they're going to be heard and that you can work together so nobody feels that they're being taken advantage of. I went somewhere, Mr. Nowicki, when he would drive around the neighborhood, he'd stop and talk to people and he'd listen to what they have to say. Because a lot of times what happens is when you're involved with a, with a problem, just the people in that neighborhood call. And you find a lot when you talk to other people, say, well, how about this and listen to other people.
Jan Thronson.
I think the most important thing is when the developer or builder wants to do something in the neighborhood, is to come talk to the neighborhood. And you come to a compromise because a lot of things I see at the city council meetings, people say, I didn't know this was going on. A lot of arguing fighting goes on and then kind of the red flags go up and then people don't want to talk to each other. So I think it's important in our neighborhood, I live over northwest behind ShopCo, it has to be a good fit. I have not ashamed that the whiskey bones over there, I brought issues to the council about what's taking place at the bars. And that then come down to downtown Rochester and they said, well, they don't want many more bars down Rochester because they were getting a lot of bars down Rochester. So the businesses and people want to move into certain areas, it has to be a kind of a good fit. Does it really work for the neighborhood or does it not work for the neighborhood? And that's the big thing. But you know, you can do a lot by just talking to the neighbors, the developers, the builders and work things out and compromise. Compromise is a big thing that you're going to have to do, give and take. If you do that, it all works together and your neighborhood, your community continues to grow.
Mark Hickey.
Well, I think the most important thing really is to be a good listener. And we talk about that, it really comes down to a leadership style. When people think of a military leadership style, they think of it being very autocratic, yes sir, no sir. And perhaps in a time-pressed environment, that's a true statement when you have to make decisions with little information and the fog of war. But in a less time-constrained environment, the most effective leadership style really is a consensus style. Gathering that input from the stakeholders and coming to a common consensus when possible. Even if not everybody gets what they've asked for, by going through that process and trying to reach that consensus, there's going to be some bind to that final decision and a feeling of ownership.
Thank you. And that question comes all the way back to Byron Clark.
So I think it, when, when working with neighborhood associations, you know, I think that probably the key needs to be communication and accessibility and soliciting public feedback. In some, in some cases, there are neighborhood associations. So, so you rely on traditional forms of media to get the word out, like the news or the post bulletin, but people may not get the paper, they may not be home when the news is on, so they don't know what's happening. You know, when I was a representative, I always made a point to get out to talk to different community groups, to talk to different organizations about what was going on. And from time to time, I would even go and walk the neighborhoods just to talk to people to find out, you know, how things are going and what things that they thought were important. I think the key is really accessibility and openness in government. And if you have that, people are going to be able to express their needs and their wants to you and be able to communicate what, what needs to be done effectively.
Thank you. The next question goes first to Tim Schmidt and we'll turn to E. B. Grossfield.
Rochester has asked several times for state bonding dollars to expand Mayo Civic Center, but has come up empty-handed. Is it time for Rochester to get serious about finding a way to fund the project that does not rely on state bonding or continue to work towards state funding? Tim Schmidt.
I believe we, I believe we do need to keep working towards state bonding. It's a, it'll be in our request next year. The, the plan we've got in place now is above or five years old now and I think we might be, want, want to revisit the plan, our, our expansion plans before we bring it up next summer. Another thing we need to do is, we need to get on some of that deferred maintenance. They talk about holes in the roofs and outdated sound systems and all that. And I believe we can at least try to find the money to get the civic center, or civic, yeah, Mayo Civic Center back up to a good quality building again.
Sean Palmer.
It's really about a fairness issue. St. Cloud, Mankato, Duluth, they all are going for bonding dollars. We need to go for bonding dollars so that we're unequal upon playing field. Our sales tax or our lodging tax is one of the lowest in the state. We taxed ourselves through the sales tax dollars. We paid for 50, Highway 52 to go from a 10-year down to I think it was a two or three-year project. We also got the University of Minnesota here because we put tax dollars to it. Not a lot of the other communities in, in Minnesota do that. Our sales tax, we have to ask for it to be extended. Duluth, they get it automatically extended. Duluth put it in their general budget. We have to make a plan for ours and come back. I like it that we have voter participation for our sales tax. But again, fairness issue, Mayo Civic Auditorium, that we should be asking for bonding dollars.
Jan Thronson.
I think the Mayo Civic Center is a very important part of this community. It brings a lot of people, brings our entertainment, brings our arts, brings things back. The lobbyists, it's all come down to politics. The governor says he's going to support it this year again and then all of a sudden it goes out. Last year, it got chopped strictly due to politics. We had lobbyists lobbying for Rochester and Mankato. Why would we hire the same lobbyist to do that? It's kind of cutting your own throat. But saying that, I think it's important that we go for the dollars. Anything that we can save on the taxpayers, again, we're going to go to a wheelage tax. Homestead County is going to put a sales tax on. Everything we look at is more and more money in taxes, taxes, taxes. Most of the money stays right up in Minneapolis. If you look at their road structure and you look at their buildings, look at everything else, the metropolitan area, that's where the money stays. We need to start to get, and lobby and start to get some of that money down around Rochester different places because if we're going to be that DMC, Dust Station Medical, we're going to need a bigger civic center to bring those people here.
Mark Hickey.
Yes, I think it's important that we continue to pursue the bonding dollars. Mayo Civic Center expansion is going to be important for the city of Rochester. This is another issue that comes up when I'm out talking to the voters. Again, the feeling is it's very important for Rochester, but there's also somewhat frustration at the piecemeal fashion that the, we have at the civic center. It's the nature of how we've developed it over times and it's can't, it's not something we can wipe the slate clean and start now, but we have to try to make do with what we have. Talked about deferred maintenance and some of the other issues that have come as a result of this delay in getting the bonding dollars. So I think we need to pursue that and continue to seek the state money.
Now this question goes to Byron Clark.
With respect to the Mayo Civic Center funding, you know, it's just a fact of life in Minnesota that if you want major infrastructure projects like that, you do have to go to the legislature to ask for approval. I don't think that there's any reason necessarily why we wouldn't do it. I would tell you though, that as city leaders, you know, your city council can only do what they can do. As a community, if, if the civic center is really important, we need to rally around it together and engage on all cylinders to make sure that we're shouting in unison that this is an important project for us as a community. And part of that comes to the communication factor that happens between the city council and their elected leaders and their constituents. Everybody needs to be on the same page because if we're not, you know, they're going to sit there in St. Paul and they're not necessarily going to hear a unified voice. And that's probably the worst thing that can happen when you're trying to get a major public improvement project through.
Thank you. Joe O'Toole.
It is key, is that we work together for this. And that is not just rely on simply the city council spending, looks like spending money for folks to do our work for us, but that we, together as a community, we really, really raise the voice or the outcry for the need for this. The, for DMC to be successful, we're going to, a big piece of that is the civic center. It's going to have to be a quality venue in order for us to, to draw quality events. Right now, my son, my son-in-law has to go to Seattle to give his presentations for Mayo Clinic because that's where the, you know, where the big venues are. You know, we need to be able to do that here as a, as a better civic center facility.
Thank you. The next question goes to Sean Palmer first and the Chamber of Commerce Julie Fiesel.
If elected, would you support hiring the Director of Community Development position that was recommended by the Permitting Task Force?
Before I'd hire anybody, I want, one, make sure that we tried another solution. And my solution would be that it's a, a attitude, it's a change of way we do business, that it's everybody's business to make sure that your customer is being treated fairly and is, is, you're working with them. If you have just one person who's ram-riding the job through, it's not, not a whole system. And you need to have an attitude change and have a system change to make it work.
Jan Thronson.
I guess that I'm a little conservative when it comes to growing government. It seems that we always want to continue just to grow government and grow government and that's the result of it. It's going to fix the problem. I think that we need to look at other things before we would hire an individual like that to see if that is what we really, really need. And if we do need it, then you bring it forward and, and lay your case out and that will happen.
Mark Hickey.
Well, as I mentioned before, I had an opportunity to sit down with Jerry Williams and discuss and discuss his work as the head of the Permitting Task Force. And again, I might have had that same reaction before my discussion with him. It sounds like we're always trying to add to government, and it sounds like we're adding to a bureaucracy. But if you look at the similar-sized cities, and they did in detail, cities the size of Rochester, so we're not comparing ourselves to, you know, New York City. This is a position that exists in virtually every single one of these cities, and it's something that's been successful. So it's hard to argue with success. The combination of the position of Director of Community Development, along with the improved technology of the Acela software are the two primary recommendations for this task force, and I think they're fundamental for moving forward.
Thank you. And now we'll bring that question back to Byron Clark.
So when it comes to hiring the Director of Community Development position, you know, I really have to look deeper into it to determine whether or not I thought it was maybe a structural issue, and are we necessarily putting a Band-Aid on a structural issue that we have that's preventing us from doing what we wanna do? Or is this really gonna do something that dramatic that's gonna solve the problem? You know, and at this point, I'm not necessarily convinced one way or the other that it's necessarily needed or that it's not needed, but you know, I'd like to know more about the underlying issue before I actually make a statement on it.
Thank you. Joe O'Toole.
The opportunity to hire the Community Development Director, I think would be critical to our overall plan. And I think a little piece of what everyone has said here at the head table would be part of a decision-making process. You know, a further, a little deeper look at the need, I wanna see the success record. But I know from experience in the communities that I went back east, that this was, with the right person, the Community Development Director can be a dynamic voice and really lend depth and credence to our corporate voices, citizens.
Tim Schmidt.
I've talked to Jerry Williams and Phil Wheeler, and you kinda get both sides. I mean, one is that it can be a good voice for Rochester business, and the other thing is how will it fit into the organization that we have? I mean, what would be the salary levels? And, you know, concerned, is there always concern adding levels? So the first thing we gotta do is basically say, what is our problem, and what, and will this fix it? And I think that we need to have more conversations about this.
Okay, the next question goes first to Jan Thronson, and it is from the floor. What would you do to change the way minorities are trusted or mistrusted by the police and the city?
Well, I sit on the CAP Strategic Planning Committee, and we meet the first Thursday of every month. And right now, I don't know that that issue's ever come up. I think that you treat all citizens equal in a community. I don't think you treat anyone any better than anyone, and as I go around, I don't see or hear, I guess, that there's a big issue in Rochester that any minority is being treated differently than anybody else.
Mark Hickey, excuse me.
I would echo that I'm not aware that this is a problem right now. Again, talking to Chief Peterson, had an opportunity to discuss the workings of the department, and one of the things they've taken on is intelligence-led policing. This has really contributed to the solved crime rate within Rochester. So this is something, especially someone involved in technology, I think initially you'd be a little bit skeptical that maybe this is just a widget or a quick fix, but the results again have been dynamic and have been, speak for themselves. It's been very successful, and I think this is something we need to continue in the future.
Byron Clark, same question.
When it comes to working with minorities, you know, I always think that it's important to have a dialogue. Rochester in and of itself is a very diverse community. It never fails to amaze me, when I'm walking down the street, the people that I meet that are literally from all over the world. We have such a diverse community here, and there's so many different skill sets that are all over the place. I have not really heard that, you know, minority conflict has really been that much of an issue, because for the most part, everybody that I've run into has been really accepting. I've got a neighbor that's from Egypt, I've got a neighbor that's from India, and, you know, certainly they all have support groups, even within their own communities. But from a Rochester perspective as a whole, we have some international visitors. I have yet to see that it's been much of an issue.
Joe O'Toole.
I would agree, I haven't seen it as an issue. And I know from my involvement with the Police Department and the quality of the officers that we have on the street, that I'm very comfortable that all groups, diversity of the city is fairly and equally treated.
Tim Schmidt.
Something like 15% of our population is minorities, so a problem like this really wouldn't be too visible. There's been a case on the national scene, and you may have all heard about it, but, so this says something that, it's larger than Rochester. And like an example, locally, the Smiling Population, they come from a country where the police would come and rescue for random reasons, so they're naturally distrustful. But with the Diversity Council and stuff, we have been reaching out, and we've always had a diverse population with a lot of international visitors. So I believe the police are used to dealing with minorities and a diverse population.
Sean Palmer.
Well, I was born in Rochester in 1959. Rochester demographics have changed quite a bit since then. We still pretty much a homogeneous community though. I do work at the Danny Room Healthy Living Center, and we meet many, many different cultures there. I also teach swimming there, and it's not unusual to have six different people from six different countries, and none of them from North America. It's a neat experience to talk to them, ask them what they think about Rochester, what they love about Rochester, what they don't like about Rochester. Snow is one of them they don't like. But I think it's important that we have a welcoming community to everybody, and again, treat everybody fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will go first to Mark Hickey, and again, from our audience. What would you do to support the nonprofit services sector in our community?
Well, nonprofits are obviously a backbone of Rochester. I've got a lot of community service. I've had work with both youth sports and the arts, working with the city. There's limited interaction with the city, with the nonprofits. They've recently reviewed the provisions for providing police in support of nonprofit functions. And this is something, an issue of fairness to all nonprofits. They've developed the ordinance of when police over time will be charged and when it can be provided, when they just use the officers that are available on duty. So when the city is a bit capable of doing so, they wanna support the nonprofits, but they also wanna do it in an even-handed and fair way, and make sure that we're treating all organizations alike.
Jan Thronson.
I think nonprofits, to support nonprofits in Rochester, any community, is very important. I myself volunteered for the Soul Street Memorial. I was on the, volunteered for the Honor Flights. Again, I talk about the Ronald McDonald Ride, I've actually wrote in that. It's a worthy cause, it's raised over a million dollars for the kids with Ronald McDonald Ride. Another thing I do is, I talk a lot about Isabella Honor. I just come back from Colorado, we did EMS out there, we were at the Air Force Academy, and we're at the Gold State Colorado with their law enforcement. We just did a thing recognizing the 19 in Prescott, Arizona, that died. I called up to Rochester, went down, I talked to sheriff, police, fire, everything else, together around South Beach, Minnesota, and we videotaped that, and we sent that out. Our memorial service had tolled the bell seven times for the loss of their life. Again, I think that any community, you have to do and be a nonprofit and do it.
Sean Palmer.
Well, Rochester has a great volunteer community, we have a great nonprofit community. I've been a volunteer with YMCA Camp Olson, I've been a volunteer with the YMCA, teach lifeguard training. I also support the Art Center, I support Corey Hill, the History Center, the Rochester Area Foundation. I've been named Volunteer of the Year from the Habitat for Humanity, I was Volunteer of the Year from Camp Olson YMCA. I've been past president of Camp Olson, took my time and my family time to volunteer. Also, I've been on the Environmental Commission for Almsted County, I was chairman.
Tim Schmidt.
Definitely I support the nonprofits. A good example of something that was done, this was done by the school district, but they sold homeschool to the Boys and Girls Club for sheep, and then eventually had to discount it a bit further. And the schools and the Boys and Girls Club have a really good relationship that help benefit each other. Volunteers help extend the services of the city. The Police Department relies on volunteers, the Parks Department relies on volunteers. I've done tree plantings, litter pickup. As far as what we can do to help nonprofits, it's basically listen to them, and they each have a unique situation and see where the city can help extend services, because I believe helping out the nonprofits, it doesn't cost the city, it pays for the city.
Joe O'Toole.
Supporting nonprofits is critical. The issue that we had seen recently about whether or not we were going to fund police time to support some of the activities the nonprofits were doing, I think it was addressed in a very, very fair way, and I think it'll play out well for us in the future. Involvement with Bear Creek Services, one of our premier nonprofits in the city, folks do just wonderful work. We have a, we have a unique city here in that we have myriad possibilities to volunteer, and I see it every day, and the amount of volunteers that step up to the plate to help out, and that is, that's just, we're tremendously lucky in that way. And like on, at the school level, we have, our seniors, our graduating seniors are required to do nonprofit service in order to plant that seed for service in the future.
Byron Clark.
Nonprofits do play a very valuable part in any community. In the past, before I came to Rochester, I had chaired a fundraiser for the American Heart Association. I had worked with the Boy Scouts quite a bit, I worked with United Way, I had raised money for the Food Bank, I'd volunteered time at the Dorothy Day House. You know, every single one of those organizations have distinctly different missions that, you know, you could argue is vital to the community in many different ways. And as a city council, I think that nonprofits should be encouraged to be a part of your community and should be encouraged to participate, and it's important for us to make sure that their concerns are heard.
Thank you. We have time for one more question before we move to closing arguments. It will go to Jan Thronson first, and we'll continue this direction, sorry, to the right, to my right. Does the city council have a role in addressing climate change? And this is from the floor.
Climate. Climate change is a big issue, it's Mother Nature. I guess where we can save energy and do things, they talk about climate control, about closing down the power plant because of the emissions. Is that the thing to do? Money-wise, yes, it's the thing to do. Everyone's going to the natural gas, everyone wants to burn the natural gas, and there's a lot of it out there to do that. So I think we need to move in a smarter way as far as when it comes to that, but I think we need to move carefully to that. There's a lot of energy things out there that people think that are money savings, but they really aren't. So with that, I guess I would look at each one on its own test, there are the lighting, I know a gentleman that's been working for the last two years in the lighting industry, that they can save a lot of money in power, and I think those are the things that we need to start looking out there, because out there, as a council member, you need to take interest and let them pursue that and give us a presentation of it, so that we can do that.
Sean Palmer.
One of the things the city can do is that we can look at our bus route, and we can see if we can improve our buses and maybe have Sunday buses. Right now, we have kind of a up-and-spoke, they come out and they come back, and we could use some round robin bus routes. The other thing that we can, we can do is really kind of work with the school district and see if we can combine some busing. And when there's big events, have some special buses for everybody. Fourth of July, we could have buses and help with that. The other item that you had to look at is the energy code, and our homes use the most amount of electric, most amount of energy, and they waste the most. We should encourage people to be energy conservation in their home, and those are items that the city can help with.
Tim Schmidt.
I've always been a believer in energy efficiency and also recycling. One thing's always been true is that the air quality in Rochester's always been kind of spotty. It's a geography problem, we're in a valley, and we're southeast of the Twin Cities. But as far as what the city itself can do is, you know, we do have energy-efficient lighting, we do low-emission buses, and maybe one of the things I advocated for when I was running for county was to start a recycling facility to help reduce the waste that goes into the burners or the landfill.
Joe O'Toole.
It's council that creates the environment for climate savings, and then we do that now with low-emission vehicles, with the natural gas vehicles, with electric vehicles, with pushing for wind and solar power for our utilities. And also, don't forget, the more trees we plant, the cleaner the air. So we need, we need to be about, you know, putting trees on our boulevards and throughout the city, even on the county roads.
Byron Clark.
I think the city has things that they can do to impact environmental policy in a positive way. Some of the things that I really like that the city does is they work with the Hazardous Waste Disposal Center. They do a really good job of helping people dispose of hazardous chemicals. It's a fairly inexpensive service and prevents stuff like that from being dumped in a landfill. So those are our positive activities that we can continue to do. LED streetlights would be another great one for the city. They're expensive to put in, and I know that a few years ago, they looked at possibly raising some revenue to try to accelerate that. I do know that, you know, they just put one end out at the end of my street, and it's a win-win all the way around, because it saves the city a significant amount of energy costs, and it could save the taxpayers a significant amount of money, so.
Thank you. Mark Hickey will now answer.
The primary role for the city would be in energy efficiency and energy savings. I had an opportunity to sit down with Dale McCamish and discuss the new Rochester Senior Center project that was approved as part of the extension of the sales tax. This twenty million-dollar project includes concepts of geothermal and energy efficiency. Another example of a local project, when I was chairman of the Grand Arena Building Committee, I worked with the city and the county, and we drew up plans that included geothermal out in the fields, the cooling and heating fields. This was kind of a pioneering effort, this was six years ago, and we've had resulted in tremendous energy savings out there at the Grand Arena. So there's two examples of energy-efficient projects, and those are the types of things the city can do.
Thank you. We will now move to closing statements, and you've been a good sport about this, let's send the microphone one more time down to Byron Clark. And we will reverse the order of the opening statements, and Mr. Clark will go first, and you have 90 seconds for your closing.
All right. Again, I would just like to thank you for putting on this forum. Things like this are always very useful to get information out there. It's always nice to see that there's such a big crowd. In fact, I would have to say that from all the forums that I've done like this in the past, this is probably one of the bigger crowds that I've ever seen at a debate. So thank you all for coming. It's exciting to see that people are engaged in the process. I'm excited to offer a different perspective than we've had in Rochester before. I've got some different experiences when it comes to economic development. Again, my Renaissance on legislation was a huge success in North Dakota. I know that we focus on Destination Medical Center, and that if we do it right, it can be a positive for the community, and we can really help grow Rochester without necessarily raising taxes. So I look forward for the opportunity to meet you, and I'll stick around afterwards if anybody has any questions, and thanks again.
Thank you. Joe O'Toole.
Again, my thanks also to the voters chamber, you hit the post bulletin, and all of you. It's critical that our, that our citizens be present and to be involved and not hesitate to, to hold your leaders' feet to the fire, to get your answers or to get your point across. My service to the community over the past five years has been in-depth. I am proud to be in Rochester and for all the opportunities that we have here. And with your support, I would like to do that for you on council.
Tim Schmidt.
I'd like to thank you everyone for showing up tonight. Your council member has two major jobs. First has to be the face of the city. If you have an issue such as a pothole in the street or a neighborhood isn't mowing the lawn, your council member is your point of view. the lawn, your council member is your point of contact. Your council member must be familiar with various departments and their duties so you can get the help that you need in time of the manner. I have experience with this as a neighborhood leader. The other main job is to mediate disputes. Whether it's a project where the builder and neighbors can't reach an agreement or if you contest to side walk or tear, your council member needs to be impartial and informed to reach a fair decision. With my experience working with staff and council and my role as a volunteer for the city and county and also being a regular attendee at the council meetings, I have kept up with issues and am familiar with standard procedures. I'm not beholden to any special interest, so I can trust, treat everyone as equal. Running for office is one way to serve your community. I've volunteered before and I'll continue participating after the selection. And I urge everybody to get involved with you, whether it's the city, the county or nonprofit. You can find something that suits your interest. I urge you all to vote next week for Tim Schmidt for Rochester City Council. I'll be your voice.
Thank you. Sean Palmer.
Again, for me, it's about partnership. It's working together with, with all the citizens of Rochester. It's important when I've been out knocking on doors and talking to the people that crime, schools and park and rec is important to everybody. Again, DMC is, is a partnership. It's a huge issue coming up. It's a partnership between the county, the state, the citizens of Rochester and Mayo Clinic. I was born and raised in Rochester. 1959, I was born. I went to Lourdes, graduated, went to RCC and graduated with a general degree. I then went into a four-year apprenticeship in carpentry, decided I wanted to go back to college and went to Illinois State. Graduated the degree in building technology. I've been chairman of the Environmental Commission. I was on the Environmental Commission for five years. I also was president of the Camp Olson Board and was on the Camp Olson Board for 12 years. I support lots of different activities in Rochester. I support the Rochester Area Foundation, the Art Center, the History Center and the YMCA. I've been involved in the community for a long time. I've watched local politics for the last 22 years. I want you to go look at my website, palmerforcouncil.org. And I'd like asking you right now for your vote and please vote on July 30th. Thank you very much.
Jan Thronson.
I bring a new face and a clear approach to the city council. As your full-time fifth ward council member, I've brought 37 years of hands-on experience and leadership and the team approach to the city council and the construction industry that is not there today. I have run multimillion-dollar projects over the 27 years at the Federal Medical Center that I was there from the ground up completion. I have a full, I have the time to seek strong and responsible economic growth at small businesses and manufacturing as DMC moves forward in our diverse community. I think it's important, again, I will say that we support our trade schools, work together with our Rochester Public Schools and that we work closer with our Olmsted County government so where we can take the issues and combine services where we can. I may not always be in the minority, majority position, but my leadership ability, direct involvement and core beliefs of transparency and accountability will always allow the democratic process to work for you. I ask for your support and vote on July 30th. Thank you.
Mark Hickey.
Well, thank you for coming out this evening. During my career, I've always been committed to public service, both in the military and as a civilian. During my 32-year military career as a colonel in the Army Reserve, I've had an opportunity to deploy to both Iraq and Afghanistan. These experiences shaped my ability as a leader and developed my strategic planning skills. On the civilian side, my role as an IBM inventor in both invention has been invaluable. We look forward to the challenges for Rochester. Destination Medical Center implementation is going to be the number one issue facing Rochester for the next 10 years and beyond. The challenge for the city council will be to safeguard the taxpayer while investing in the infrastructure needed to enhance the city. My combination of military leadership skills and strategic planning, coupled with my civilian engineering experience, makes me uniquely qualified to participate in this process. I'm asking for your vote on July 30th. Thank you.
This concludes the candidates portion, so before my closing remarks, let's all thank them for participating. I would like to thank each of the candidates for participating in tonight's forum. Thank you for your service to the community and for your willingness to participate in the democratic process by running for office. I would like to remind the viewers that the views expressed in the forums tonight were those of the candidates, not those of the League of Women Voters Rochester or any partner or sponsor of the forum. Thanks to our partners, the Rochester Area Chamber of Commerce, the Rochester Post Bulletin, the Rochester Public Library and RCTC. Our supporting sponsors, our neighbors, the Rochester Area Council, PTSA, our, our neighbors, I should have said, our neighbors, the RUT and then the Rochester Area Council, PTSA and Rochester Community Education. Remember that Primary Election Day is July 30th. I'd like to remind you all that absentee voting for residents of Olmsted County has moved to Olmsted County Fairgrounds. The address is 1421 Third Avenue Southeast. Please remember to vote. If you have a question about your polling place, visit the Secretary of State website To see this forum again, view it on cable, on cable channel 10, check out a DVD from the Rochester Public Library or access the forums online from the Rochester Public Library website. Thanks for coming. Good night, everybody.